We will now begin our regular business board meeting. I welcome you all to the Beaverton School District Business Meeting for October 22nd, 2018. We ask that you all silence your cell phones and keep any conversations out in the other room, please. And if you would all join me and Chris Ann Reed in leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you, Chris Ann, for leading us in the pledge. At this time, board members, do you have any changes to the agenda? Great. Public, we welcome you to join us in participation in tonight's meeting. If you would like to address the board, please complete a yellow card that you'll find outside and give it to Mary Hawkins here, our board assistant. We appreciate your limiting your comments to three minutes for each card. Comments will be heard on a first-come, first-served basis and rotated in order. Okay. And the board will not address your comments at this time, but we'll get back to you within a week. But at this time, we're going to recognize our outstanding pillars. And to read our first award is...
We're going to recognize Chris Ann Reed. We expect excellence with the flag of learning and liberty. In honor of more than 38 years of dedication to the children of the Beaverton School District, Chris Ann Reed is being awarded the flag of learning and liberty, which symbolizes the fundamental interdependency of public education and the democratic way of life enjoyed in the United States of America. Chris Ann began her career in 1979 as an intervention teacher and has continued as a special education teacher, child development specialist, counseling psychologist, and psychologist in several elementary schools in the district, including Cooper Mountain, Cedar Mill, El Monica, Finley, and Vos Elementary Schools. Chris Ann also worked with Bridges Academy as a home instructor. Chris Ann has spent her career dedicated to helping every kid she encounters. She loves the most complicated cases and never gives up until success is reached. She loves to research and doesn't leave any stone unturned. Chris Ann believes in going to extreme measures to meet the needs of the most difficult. Her magic weapon is her pet snake she uses to build strong, trusting relationships with the students. She has a keen sense of humor that only adds to her likability, states Kathleen Skidmore, former principal at Finley Elementary Schools. Chris Ann is a fierce advocate for students, particularly when it comes to inclusive practices. She often sees potential in students before it's recognized by others, and students meet those high expectations. Chris Ann brings creative ideas to the table when teachers feel they have exhausted their backup tricks. She will be missed by our home instruction team here at Bridges, but I'm excited she will have the opportunity to enjoy her well-deserved retirement. She does so much to make the world a better place outside of work. I'm confident she'll stay plenty busy. Congratulations, Chris Ann, says the administrator for Bridges Academy, Ashley Hudson. Chris Ann's only focus was the student she was working with at the time. She worked so hard to get to the root of a student's difficulty or disability. And she will be missed, says Lenore Johnson, or excuse me, Johansson, Assistant Director of Special Education. The flag of liberty and learning has become an important reminder to all communities that education serves as a driving force in advancing freedom and liberty in our democratic society. Congratulations, Chris Ann.
So, I assume, given that Mr. Staley was mentioned in some words by Kathleen Skidmore, I would bring him along because a friend of mine who got this word last year said they would be thinking, wow. So I thought, okay, Mr. Staley will be mentioned. So I absolutely decided to bring him. And... I always protect people that have their own... However, he is very wonderful. There have been snakes. And I went out with a yogurt glasses, Martin. It ended with talking about looking at the world with fresh eyes. And I thought, when I went and I thought we could talk about looking at the world with fresh eyes, that there were five things that fit with my world in Beaverton, which was over a rich 38 years. I mean, 38 years ago, you know, this was halfway out of the country, and at one point in time, my office was in the back area here, and this is where we had apartment meetings. And so, this central office was my home base or part of my life. But in looking at the world with fresh eyes is to ask different questions. And that was one of the things I used to like to do, which is part what Kathleen said, looking at things and reading the... Looking in the Q files to look at what you could learn in the Q file besides just the basic information. It used to be a joke with some of my spread teams about whether or not they could find everything I learned in a Q file. Walking in someone else's shoes. The homework club that was at Cedar Mill and West TV actually was started because I worked with people who also could look at the world differently, ask different questions, and I'll walk in other people's shoes because I had a job part-time and I had an administrator that was creative, and somebody that was in a job area with me for one year spoke Spanish and had some evening time that he could do. So, looking at someone else's shoes and how to walk in them. There were kids that couldn't come to the schools for homework. So, I went over, made contact with the manager of the apartments. We got the homework club going at the apartments, which then blossomed into two other schools that had a longevity over there. Also, speaking another language, you know, there's snake language, there's pet language, there's, you know, ASD language, there's pet language, there's the DHP language. And Mr. Staley, I mean, someday maybe I'll write it back, but the number of kids that he has bonded with, kids that would come to school to help be with him, social skills groups, kids that could go home with a picture that they, you know, had holding them and sort of trump a neurotypical peer or sibling at home, that they got to do something that no one else got to do. And the number of stories that this guy has, you know, created experiences for other kids has been amazing. And the last one was play. And when I was walking with my friend over there in the woods, and she said, well, so how is it heading, you know, in your grandchild? And he was a little over two now. I said, it's like work. And I was reflecting on that later, and I thought, that's because, to me, a lot of my work was play. I had fun. I had fun being with kids. I had fun looking at their world and how they viewed everything else that they saw, even if it was different and didn't make sense to a lot of their teachers or their parents, trying to figure out how to walk in their shoes, look at the world from their perspective, and play with them. So, I carry all my experiences from 38 years forward into my new world of being a grandparent and a cultural therapist and continuing to take my say with me.
University Music Hall of Fame, Bill James. Bill James, music teacher at McKay Elementary School, was recently inducted into the Pacific University Music Hall of Fame. He's Mr. James to students where he teaches music, but you may know him as the guitarist and vocalist for the band Sylvia's Ghost, whose new album, Epic, was released this month. Congratulations. As a teacher, he encourages students to play, forming after-school guitar clubs and other groups. I think the most admirable thing about him is that he is a humanist. Bill takes the time to think deeply about our community and then takes action. He looks out for his colleagues and is an elephant advocate for fair policies and good working conditions. State Jennifer Moore Colette, music teacher at Fern Grove Elementary School. James plays the piano, the oboe, the guitar, and other instruments. None of them well, he says. Besides Sylvia's Ghost, James has played in Floating Point, Uncle B, and Auntie E, J-Dog, Jesus Presley, and Post-Impression, the band he belonged to during his specific years. Congratulations, Bill.
I'm not as excellent as Kathy, so I just wanted to thank Beaverton's, the Beaverton School District Course Committee on Music Education. All elementary students in Beaverton get 90 minutes of music every six days. You might have noticed in the biz journals that they rank the top 50 elementary schools in half of Beaverton. And I think our music at PD are a big part of that. My kids go to school about four and a half miles from my school, McKay Elementary, and they have no music at all. Of course, my kids do, but, you know, but their friends know. And I think that the word is an important piece of that puzzle, save a PD. And so, I want to thank Beaverton School District. Here's what I do with my primary kids. I ask all of you to raise your hand and put it over your shoulder and say, good job. So, keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have public participation, and again, three minutes. If you have something more to say than your three minutes, you're welcome to leave some written information or get back to us with other information, but we will try to keep it to three minutes because we have lots of topics that we want to cover this evening. So, I will call the first name and then say who's will be following, so we'll have like on deck. So, the first one up is Emily Rubbles, and after that will be Lynn McTray.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate being here. My name is Emily Rubbles, and I'm a Spanish teacher at Westview High School in my 14th year in the Beaverton Middle District. I was at Five Oaks Middle School for six years and taught a few of your wonderful children. And I wanted to begin by sharing two things that are going really well this year. I'm co-advising the Black Student Union for the first time at Westview High School. We have excellent leadership in our two senior co-presidents, and I strongly believe in these young leaders, and I'm so thankful to work with them. They are very inspiring to myself and our student body. And I also just, I didn't write this down because I just want, I want to say how excited I am that we get to work with these wonderful students every single day. And I just think, like, we're here for such an amazing reason. Like, we are all in this room because of these kids, and we are so lucky that they are why we're here. And I love my job, and I love interacting with young people and encouraging them, and I use that, I use Spanish to do that, but I could teach a lot of things. I'm here because I really want them to believe in themselves and find something that they enjoy. So, I just, even though it's 14 years in, I just, they continue to amaze me. My biggest challenge is giving formative feedback to my 187 students. They are so eager to learn. Giving individualized instruction to 38 students in one classroom is extremely difficult, and I want to continue to work for sustainable funding in our state and our district in order to specifically decrease class size. I, you know, if I worked at an assembly line and I had to produce whatever percentage more, my productivity and my quality of product would decrease. And I think that that simple principle applies to class size. And I work really hard to produce excellent product, which is my students' ability to speak Spanish and believe in themselves. And I just really want the best product for them because I think that they see that as a reflection of their ability. So, class size would... And my hope for my students, again, is just that they find a career that they love that doesn't, they don't think about the paycheck, they just internally, you know, enjoy it. And I'm really thankful that teaching is up for myself. So, thank you for your time.
Good evening. Next, and after Lynn will be Kristy Krogan.
Hi. Good evening, and thank you very much. I'll get this wrong. I said Becky, but Becky Timshuck, that's okay. And Superintendent Grodin, thank you very much. And I just wanted to, you probably all know, Walking Back to School Day was a week and a half ago, which was awesome. We're getting the tallies in, and approximately, well, well over 3,000 people participated at 27 schools, which was really cool. And I just heard that a couple of other schools just chose not to register and just celebrated anyway, so I was really excited to see. We had two new schools that actually registered for Walking Back to School Day, Hope Chinese Christian School, as well as ISB. And so, that was pretty exciting. More schools are also including bus riders in walk and roll events, which is great because we often just don't have the opportunity to walk and bike. One school, or sorry, several schools, including Oregon's PE Teacher of the Year School, Kristy Wilson. Her school, she's been spearheading a lot of the kids who do bus by walking a couple of laps around the track, three laps, I do believe, because she, like a lot of us, do know that kids who have exercised before and during the school day are a lot more successful within their whole school day. Thank you to Becky for coming to Vos Elementary School, as well as several of the South Beaverton schools. Vos Elementary, they're saying there was probably about 300, 350 kids participate, and it was pretty awesome. Thank you very much. I don't know if anybody else was able to get to a school, but it was pretty cool. So, thank you as well to Beaverton PD, as well as Washington County Sheriff's Office for being at several of the schools. Thank you to Monique Singleton at Vos Elementary School. She reported that there was four times the amount, number of bikes and scooters in the racks than there are usually. And thank you to Callie McNamie from West TV, where she was interviewed on KGW. Unfortunately, it wasn't no airtime. But she's an amazing advocate for active transportation and the health benefits that come to the school, as well as the environmental benefits. Environmental benefits, big shout-out to the district's green teams. A lot of the green teams throughout the district were the champions of Walk and Roll to School Day. And they, like all of us, know that the academic and environmental benefits that come from choosing active transportation as opposed to the single occupancy of the school. So, thank you for encouraging it, and let's keep going because it's, everything's possible, especially this weather.
How many people, when you first did the walk and ride to school, how many kids participated versus now?
Actual numbers, that will be a definite thing that I'll do towards the end of the year, but there were, it was Ruth Deal, actually, when we started. We started with one school at West TV, and so, we have 27 schools now.
Excellent. Next up is Kristy Krogan, and after that is Megan Phillips.
Hi. My name is Kristy Krogan, and my son has been a student at the Academic Enchantment Program for the past three years. It's the AS program out at the Capital Center. I'm here today to start the conversation about the inadequate facilities that are provided to the students, the teachers, and the paraeducators that are a part of this program. How do I define inadequate? There's no library, there's no cafeteria, there's no gym, there's no track, there's no appropriate outdoor access, there are no field trips. AS students do not even attend the district's annual special education track meet. And there's no music, as was mentioned by a gentleman earlier. There's no music there. The students in the AS program are basically housed in three windowless rooms for six and a half hours a day. This is where my son participates in activities outdoors in the parking lot. And some kids aren't even allowed outside in the parking lot because they might do damage to the cars. The question I want to ask you is, why does the Beaverton School District Administration believe that this is okay? Furthermore, why do they allow it to be okay? Yes, these students exhibit difficult behaviors that challenge their learning, and they do need a facility that offers a small and structured setting, but I'm here to ask why the Beaverton School District continues to house these kids in this environment. And I'm for you to ask your administrators why these kids are provided less than the bare minimum. I feel that we are better than this. We have option schools that provide educators and specialized programs to Beaverton School District students. Why do we not offer this type of an option school for a special education group that needs it the most? If we can create an academic program that provides a specialized focus on the performing, visual, and communication arts, why can't we not offer an opportunity for high-needs special education students like the ones in the AS program? We are better than what the current administration offers to this program and our special education students. Don't just throw these kids in the corner and forget about them. We need to offer them an opportunity, and they will thrive. No library access, no cafeteria, no gym or track, no appropriate outdoor access, no field trips. This is not okay. Our family and other families want to be a part of the change, and we are coming to you, and we are begging you to help us right this wrong.
Thank you, Kristy. Next, Lynn. And after Lynn is Vera.
Hi. I'm Megan Phillips. Nice to see all of you. I really appreciate you being here. My thoughts are all scattered because I wear so many hats in this district. I was a student once at Bethany Meadow Park, Westview. My mom just retired and stole her. My aunt taught, my cousin taught, my nieces, my nieces and nephews, my cousins go to school all over the district. I teach at Cedar Mill. I'm a second-grade teacher. I've been there six years. I was eight years at El Monica before that. Student taught at Bee Breakers. My son, though, is in his first year at Cedar Park. He finished the last two years at Cedar Mill with me. He attended Forest Park Elementary and Forest Heights before that, which is a Portland school. If you know the school, it's run more like a private school than a Portland school. He had every advantage that I could have imagined. He's not learning disabled, but had one-on-one help with reading in first grade there. When we moved over to Cedar Mill, obviously, I knew his teachers, and there was a lot of communication, and he did very well. We've had a really hard time this year with the transition to Cedar Park, and it's mirrored my own personal struggles in the classroom. I'd say the greatest challenge I face in my 14th year is the shift... Sorry. Follow that previous story, the irony, is the shift in how we meet the needs of our special education community, how we communicate with their families, and how we participate together in helping them achieve their greatest potential. I have been to the principal's tea. I have attended a conference with his three teachers and his counselor. I emailed the counselor last spring. I emailed the teachers the first week of the school year. I was shocked to get a letter in the spring after we applied for Avid to find out he did not qualify despite his medical condition and his 504 for the Avid program. At conferences, I was shocked to also learn that no one had read his 504 in the sixth week of school, though I had let them know the first week that it was there and he would need at least preferential seating to get started. Everyone at the table at that conference seemed to agree Avid would be a good fit, and we're shocked to find out that we hadn't even applied. I'm struggling to articulate what it is I'd like the board to do or help us with. I just feel that it's helpful to get it out there that, as a teacher and as a parent, I see it from both sides, and I don't see it getting better. I don't see a resolution yet. I tried, my son's on the hall. I tried to get him to come in here and talk to you. He's doing okay, but it's been tough. So, thank you for listening.
Next is Moira Duff, and after Moira Duff is Erica.
Hello. Hey. I am a homeowner over in Timberland, which is a planned community, and the Timberland Middle School is there. I was invited on September 13th to a neighborhood review meeting about adding 60 parking spaces to the Timberland Middle School. So, the neighbors and I saw the lovely pictures of what this is going to look like, and we were told that for 60 parking spaces, it was going to cost $600,000. I never heard back whatever happened with this. There were several different neighbors who were making different comments about their concerns for adding 60 parking spaces. One is, it will obviously diminish the green space because, you know, where else are you going to put it? Another one was that there's lighting in the parking lots, and now the parking lot would be directly behind some of the homes, and they would be getting some light in the evening, as well as the parking lots are open for use, and, you know, people like to hang out there and play their car radios. The construction noise and disruption was brought up, and also the fact that Timberland is a planned community, and when you buy into Timberland, the various parts of the community, you'll notice there's not a lot of parking. And that is because it's a planned community, and the plan is for people to utilize public transportation as much as possible. So, adding 60 parking spots to a school that hasn't even opened as a middle school yet is, first of all, it's kind of ridiculous because people should be using public transportation, and there should be enough parking spots there to begin with. And the second part is, $600,000 is a lot of money to be spending on parking spots when there are other areas in the district, we just heard from a couple, where I think the money could be better spent. That's my opinion. I think the money could be better spent elsewhere. But anyway, I would like to see some follow-up on this, and also, I would like to know where that money's coming from. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Erica?
My students would say I wouldn't need this, so I could just get up and use my teacher voice. Hi. My name is Erica Bax, and I am an English Language Arts teacher at the School of Science and Technology. I'm here on behalf, as a faculty member, but also a union representative for Capital Center. I'm one of three. And I'm here because I just want to put something back on your radar that has, it's a perpetual thought that we, unfortunately, in the society today, think about, which is school shootings. We are a high school that does not have an SRO, and we were told that it was set aside in the budget to have this be in our school this year. And through the numerous contacts that I've made, I really didn't get an answer besides that the district and either Beaverton and Hillsborough, since we're right on the border, or Washington County couldn't come to an agreement. And I'm not privy to all the circumstances, so I'm not going to pretend to know what has gone on in the background. But I'm here on behalf of my students, my colleagues, because it's really important in this day and age that we provide as much security as possible, sorry, for our students and for the teachers that are in the building. The reason I'm being choked up, because it happens, unfortunately, too often, is a few Mondays ago, we had a student who made a threat, and all the proper protocols were followed. It was beautiful. They called him to say, "Go again." The students did what they were supposed to do, and we still had 10% of our students not show up the next day because they were scared to come to school. So I just want to put it back on the radar that we're without an SRO. My interpretation is that we are one of the few, if not the only, high school without one in the district. And I know that you guys put it in the budget, and I just want to see if there's something that we can do or you guys can do to really push that, because I think our students deserve it. And it's sad that I'm coming here asking for that, but it is what it is, and I want them to feel safe. It's hard to get them to learn anything if that basic necessity is not there. I want to feel safe, and I want to see my colleagues feel safe as much as we can provide. Thank you.
That concludes our public participation, and again, someone from the staff and the board will be getting back to those of you that participated tonight within the week. But we appreciate all of you coming out tonight. Next up is comments from our superintendent, Roddy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to talk about a lot of the subjects that have come up today, and it really revolves around resources. And so in working with OSBA, OEA, and others, COSA is forwarding its goals and also has already done some tremendous work in the area of advocating for revenue. One of the first things that they did is trying to determine what our current service level is, and so often K-12 funding starts behind what we believe is the current service level. So with the help of COSA, other lobbyists, Mr. Williams has been instrumental in helping this happen, is that we are really hoping that the governor acknowledges a roll-up of a number that starts with nine, $9 billion, somewhere between $9 billion and $9.2 billion as a starting point. Other things that also we're going to be asking for is full funding for Measure 98, which would be $300 million, and also the flexibility to be able to use some of that funding down into our middle schools. Currently, you can only use 10% of that funding at the eighth-grade level. Other areas where they're asking for some funding is $15.8 million to in creating and diversifying our workforce, and that is a primary incentive. So that money could be used for either schools to engage our students, who especially in Beaverton, where we have such a diverse student population, we could start encouraging some of our students to become, to look at going into the teaching force, and we're already engaged in some of that, but really to expand those programs. As you've just heard, there's been an ask for $75 million to address some of the social, emotional, learning behaviors that not only Beaverton, but all school districts, all teachers, all staff are experiencing. So that's going to be a specific ask, and these asks are going to be outside of the general allocation to K-12 funding. The other thing that we're going to be asking for is $163 million. This is probably the biggest ask, and that will go for early learning, early childhood experiences. Right now, we have approximately 40,000 three- and four-year-olds in our state that are 200% and below the poverty level, that are not receiving any resources whatsoever, and these are the students that are coming in, entering our kindergarten without not only the academic supports, but also the social-emotional regulations that are needed to do. So we're going to be asking for $163 million there, as well as, we just heard a lot about special education students, EICSE. So these are all the students, zero to five, who have been identified with some sort of learning or physical disability that need funding. And our EICSE funding's been woefully underfunded in Oregon. We're asking $70 million to serve what I would say are some of our most vulnerable children coming into the system. Having said that, we just heard from economic forecasts that right now they're predicting in the state general fund a $1 billion shortfall, and which is kind of discouraging when we're going through some of the best economic times in Oregon right now, and unemployment is less than 4%, some of the lowest it's ever been. And we're really trying to work with business. Board member Larson and I will be actually in Tillamook tomorrow, meeting with business, OSBA officials, and other officials to look at what kind of revenue reform can we enter into collaboratively, as well as cost containment issues. And primarily, that cost containment revolves around PERS, which is our Public Employment Retirement System, and as well as healthcare costs continue to escalate. And just to remind the audience again, that it's not only Beaverton, but all school districts in Oregon are going to be experiencing somewhere between a 6% and 7% increase in PERS costs. And I also want to say that a lot of people equate that to with schools, and to be honest, PERS costs, only about a third of educators have to do with the total PERS costs in Oregon. We have a lot of other entities. But the cost to the Beaverton School District, the increase in PERS will be approximately $23 million over the by-year. And relative to the size of the district, other districts are experiencing this also. So the governor will come out with her budget in the first week of December. We are really pushing her to come out with a high number. The legislative session begins January 22nd, and particularly to board members and other folks, our next revenue forecast will come out on November 14th, and will tell us where we're at as a state. But we really need some revenue reform. As you've heard, we've got some major issues, and we need the pie to get better. We cannot continue to have the same-sized pie, and we're just going to slice it different. So we can add something to somebody, and that means you're going to be taking away from other folks. And we just need to have additional revenue reform, try to get more towards that QEM, Quality Education Model. Right now, to be adequately funded in Oregon, that would be about $10.7 billion. So just, I think we are going to be working, advocating with OSBA, OEA, OSBA, COSA, many of our other groups. We're trying to engage our business community in trying to allocate the resources that are necessary to educate each and every kid regardless of where they come from, their economic status, their ethnicity, or the language that they speak. We will be asking for a lot of help as we get ready to start that advocating. So if anybody... Anytime you get a chance to get a legislator in your sights, tell them. We're going to be inviting them out to schools, showing them what teachers are looking at as far as whether it's class size. I think we're doing some amazing work, and it always seems like we just settle for what they give us, and we always make it work. And at some point, I think we're getting down to a very critical time right now where we need some more revenue to be able to serve each and every kid and to serve the different types of kids that are coming into our schools. We don't get a pick-and-choose who gets to come. We're not a private school. We take anybody that walks through our door. So, that's it.
Thank you, Superintendent. Now onto our favorite part, school reports. And at first is Ridgewood Elementary School. Just before we line in.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm excited to share with you what we at Ridgewood are doing. Ridgewood is celebrating their 60th year this year. We opened in 1958. You're all invited. We're having an open house on November 2nd, inviting all alumni and former teachers and staff to come celebrate with us. So we have a lot of rich tradition as our community, and that's one of the things we're most proud of. We have a great parent support, and we have a lot of wonderful traditions that make our school a very special place to be. And with that parental involvement and the community's support, our kids do flourish. Not all of them. There are areas that we are working on, but a lot of our kids feel comfortable in our school and feel at home in our school and are successful in our school. There are areas that we do need to work on, though. Our subgroups, some of our ESL learners and our students receiving special education services, we continue to work to find ways to help them continue to make growth from year to year in their language arts and in math. Also, our minority students who don't see it reflected on the report because our numbers are so low, but when you look at the individual test scores as I do, we know that there is work to be done to catch those students up and to help them maintain growth from year to year. We are doing... This year, we got our Student Success Coach for the first time to support the work around social-emotional learning in the building, and it's been amazing. We've already spent time this year. We have three focuses as a staff, developing community circles within each classroom, developing calming spaces or calming corners and calming caddies for students to use in each classroom, and re-articulating our common expectations around the school with common language that we're using with students so that it's clear to them what we expect of them and how they can be successful in school. And we're just in our second month of doing that work, but it's promising. It's very promising. As with many of our schools, the social and emotional baggage that many of our students bring to school is a barrier to their education and becomes disruptive to the classroom, to the point of room clears for our students. I'm living in a classroom I had two today, I believe, where kindergarten classroom had to go outside for an extra 30 minutes because there was a kindergartner not being safe in the classroom. So that's an area that we continue to work on and continue to require support for, and so we appreciate the Student Success Coach, and we're looking forward to making gains in that area. We... Curriculum-wise, I just returned from New York, from Teachers College, listening to Lucy Colkins, and it was amazing. She's the author of the reading and writing workshops that we've implemented, and we've just begun the units of phonics for kindergarten and first grade, and the second grade one comes out in next year, so we're eager to do that work. It aligns well with who we are as a primary years program school, the workshop model, teaching through inquiry-based, small group learning. And so the support we receive through the new ELA curriculum and the new math curriculum really ties well to the work that we've been doing, and our teachers have loved it and adopted it, and we still continue to grow in that area. Having the time on Wednesdays has been a key to that growth, the collaboration time. Our teachers work in teaching teams, and they are working to implement the new curriculum around English Language Arts, math, and the new health curriculum as well. And that time is key for them to be able to work together, to plan, not only plan and see each other and reflect on what they're doing, but really to look at student data and to dig down and discover where they are finding success and what areas still need to be tackled. So that's been really important to us. This year, we'll also continue to tackle our attendance. Specifically, at our success team, we're looking at what are some of the barriers to attendance for our kids, and we're integrating attendance conversations into our parent conferences this week, asking those teachers who have students who are below 90% to talk one-on-one with those families and make sure that they understand the importance of what those days, missed days mean to those students. We have a lot of great things going, and we are looking forward to another successful school year and another successful 60 years.
Thank you for your great report. Are there any questions? Eric?
Sounds really impressive, your growth rate, fifth-grade growth rate for the Latino population in your school. And it's really high, 70% on one, and 60 something on the English. So it's something special going on there, or is it just a great cohort?
It's a good cohort. Also, it's a very small cohort compared to others around the district. So I think that just having implemented the workshop model before, and the English Language Arts has supported the math workshop model in our rooms, and we've been doing it for a while, and I think that just really... And the growth mindset work we've done around math, that everyone is mathematician, you know? That old adage of, you know, "I hate math" is not in our building. We all love math, and we all need math, so I think those have contributed to their success.
Any other comments? Liam?
I want to comment. You've got 200% on students reporting that at least one adult cares about them, and that teachers and staff report they contribute to school decision-making. I don't know if I've seen 100% in either of those before. What's going on that you achieved that?
In both areas, I think it's the sense of community. It's that just being out and about, having amazing teachers who love their jobs, and that translates to kids feeling welcome every day and standing at the doors, standing at the buses when they get off, greeting them, welcoming them, and those personal connections that we make in the classroom. I think that's the root of all success, is that personal connection. I don't think you could have the academic success without it, and that's why the social-emotional work, the Student Success Coach, is the support around that so that we can continue down that road is really important.
Still comments? Susan?
Well, I have to comment on the student connection. I really appreciate that comment. That means a lot to me. Sounds like you guys are really doing good work there. You know, it's a question that we're all wondering about, is attendance, and I noticed that you dip down a little bit to 64%. Students, you know, miss less than 10 days, and just wondering...
There are two key factors in my building. One is that I do house a specialized program with students with severe needs, and many of them, their attendance is medical. When I look at my attendance rate for September, a third of those who are below 90% were in my specialized program. So some of that is just plain unavoidable. The other is families taking vacations, and especially with the school year starting sooner and no fall break. Many have made their own, and we've noticed that in the last two weeks. Had a kid tell me this morning, "Yeah, we're going to California." The girl next door, "We're going to Florida," and "We're going to wherever." So I think it's sometimes it's just... And that's also the community where they are making their own fall breaks.
I'm wondering if we could put an asterisk when you have a school that has like a specialized program that would impact the attendance, that we can put that on the report so that, you know, see that? And yeah, it's interesting how people think of... Times have changed. I never took a vacation when I was in school. Typically, they said there was time.
Yeah, well, and with two days of conferences, unfortunately, families say, "Oh, that's a five-day weekend." Then can we have our conference next week after school on Wednesday? No. It's difficult.
Tom?
I just also add that I appreciate the 100% there. That's great to see. It's great to see that it's both students and staff there, and who knows, maybe when we see you next time, it'll be 100% with the parents, too.
Yeah, I like that.
I'm thinking about disruptive learning, and you mentioned the two room clears today. Do you track any data on the number of room clears, like per year or something like that, so we can get a sense and be able to get a handle on whether things are getting better or if they're ballooning, and how the Student Success Coaches are working at the site?
I don't track... I track it by individual kid, so I would have to go through and look and count by kid.
I see.
But it's... I can probably, in my mind, tell you which kids I needed to look at and could track it. We are tracking the use of our success room this year, which is, we set up a kind of wellness space. You're all welcome to come and admit it, where students are able to go to take a break and to re-regulate, and we are tracking the number, the usage month-to-month and time of day of the use of that classroom. The room clears, I don't have a specific number on that, but it is something we probably could check.
Thank you. My comment was, I see that you're up for reauthorization on your PYP program, and, you know, we don't have that many schools that have had it around that long. If you could just say one benefit that your community gets the most from, from being a PYP school, what would that be?
I would absolutely say it's the quality of teaching. The teachers that are in the PYP program are there because they want to collaborate, they want to work together. They want to teach in an interdisciplinary, inquiry-based model that really hooks our kids.
Well, great report, and again, I don't think I've ever seen 100%. So I think you've got all of our attention there, but congratulations on your 60 years, and we look forward to another great 60 years, but thank you very much.
Can you hear me now? Hi, good evening. My name is Annie Klow, and I am principal at Satto. We are celebrating our second year. And I am celebrating my third month on the job, and so, I am still very, very new to this school community, as it is new as well, so lots of exciting things there. I think the first thing I would highlight is, that I'm proud of, is the opening to the school year. It was a petrifying summer for me, you know, change, and thinking about the unknown, and but walking in with that staff in August, pre-service week was amazing, and we just had so much fun. And I think it's really something that maybe I didn't think about, is all those things that it takes to run a school. Established schools, they know, they have the stuff down, they can do it with their eyes closed, where lunch boxes go, where the numbers for your lunch numbers go, like all those little tiny details that, yeah, we've got to figure that out because kids are coming. So, I just felt like that was the energy and enthusiasm that the staff brought to our pre-service, really made it fun, fun for me to join them. The other piece is that we are a new school and a new school community, and I think that that is a unique opportunity to embrace who we are as Sato, the students, the staff, and to grow that. But what's amazing is that we've plopped ourselves down in a really rich area of Beaverton with a lot of historical context, and I really appreciate the fact that our school name represents that, and I've had the honor of really fully understanding the history behind the name, and I've met descendants of the Sato family and members from the Bethany Church. And I don't know if you know, but just briefly, that the Sato family had a farm right there on that land, and during the war, the family was in turn while their son was off fighting and dying for his country. And so, on November 16th, 15th, where actually the family is donating the chestnut tree, which was really meaningful to the Sato family, especially Mrs. Sato, I hear, and so we're going to plant that and have a dedication, they're going to fold a flag and give it to one of the descendants. And so, anyways, a new community with, but yet this huge sense of community to grow upon, and so, I am just excited to figure out who we are, amplify that, and just continue it. Really awesome and unique experience for an educator. Again, the other thing that I would say I'm proud of there is, I mentioned this, but the staff and the students, the openness to new leadership, that can sometimes be a bumpy road, but I've felt so welcomed and so just welcomed, and so, it's been really lovely. Some of the areas of challenges, well, I guess the main one that I would highlight is just the scariness of the rapidity of the growth around us. It's amazing. We already have over 600 students and 28, 29 in our kindergarten classes, and it's October, and I think that every time one of those projects is completed, we're going to get a nice new surge of enrollees. So, that's something that I think keeps the staff up at night, and that we're just constantly keeping our eye on. So, let's see here, do you want me to go into my action plans? I know you don't want me to read it because you guys can read, but I don't know if you want me to summarize more, or do you want to ask questions?
We can go ahead and ask questions.
Okay.
Are there any questions? Liam?
Hi, we're sorry that McKinley lost you, but I'm so excited for your new, new area of responsibility, that's really exciting. I know this is not as a result of your leadership, because you weren't there last year, but teachers feeling like they contributed to decision-making was a little bit low, and I wondered, one, maybe an action plan, but two, is that maybe a result of the fact that there's this new school and it was, they just were brought in and the decisions were already made, so they couldn't really participate as a staff? I don't know if you thought through some of that.
No, that's my second bullet point, the 58% of staff who see themselves as contributing to the decision-making, I feel like that's extremely low, and I was actually surprised by that statistic, because when you get in there, there are a whole lot of leaders there, and they are just anxious to get massaged into the correct direction and go for it. So, there, I would fully, I don't know why that is, and I don't want to take any guesses, but I would say that we will see that change. One of the things that astounded me, speaking of 100%, I want to get some 100%. Was on the cell survey, we had 100% of teachers believing every child can learn, and I think that's a starting point for teacher, like, I highlighted that in pre-service week, just saying, "We now get to build our efficacy," and we've got, we believe they can do it. How do we do it together? So, I just think it's a matter of harnessing what's there, finding the direction. They've got vision. They opened as a STEAM school, they're bringing me along, educating me in what that means, and I think that we will see that change very rapidly, at least, I hope so, because that's a problem.
Eric?
Thanks again for the tour last week, and conversed with women, I was impressed. So, yeah, I remember walking through the kindergarten, it was really, you know, really busy, 29, 28, that's a lot of kids. Are you guys armed maybe for like next year to get that third kindergarten class going or something like that?
Yes, we have four already.
Wow, okay, so you're all ready to go.
Yeah, we have one ready to go.
Like you said, those neighborhoods are going to be going up, and I imagine you're going to grow close to capacity very, very soon.
Yeah, thank you, I agree.
Any other comments? Well, again, with it being a new, you know, you being new to the school and the school being new, there's, but it looks like you guys are on the right track. Love your enthusiasm, very much enjoyed the tour last week. What I was most, you know, I loved how they were out using the facilities around them and, you know, measuring the trees and, you know, owning, but also, that kindergarten class, to know that that one teacher with no aides, no help, were having them use Kool-Aid to do watercolors, and there was classical music in the background, and it was nice and calm and moving. It was, it was really impressive, and you could, you could feel when you walked through that new beautiful school, that you're using every inch of it, and that steam is everywhere. So, thank you so much for having us last week.
Thank you, that was super fun.
Mr. Sparks and Mr. McCracken for school enrollment.
Mr. McCracken's home safe. You scared. No, it's home, it's safe.
Lawrence Shores, Mr. Sparks.
Good morning, members, uh, good morning, good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steven Sparks, executive administrator for long-range planning. As noted, Robert McCracken is under the weather and not able to join us this evening, which is a, which is a shame, because Robert has done really good work on our projections, and, you know, he lives and reads these numbers, and it would be nice for him to take a bow here. But, moving on, I'll take all the credit at this point, this evening. So, since last year, we are pretty much flat in our growth. We added approximately 38, I think it was a net gain of 38 students in the K-12 program last year, which offset about the same kind of reduction last year. We are seeing larger cohorts, cohorts move through the system, so we're seeing numbers increase in our middle and high school grades, not by, you know, huge numbers, but they are larger than what we're seeing in our elementary students. For example, we saw that this year's kindergarten class was 100 students smaller than last year. Now, it's also really showing up differently at individual schools. So, for example, at McCay, for years, we've been seeing a very low number of kindergartners, and this year we saw 60, and that's in an established neighborhood. As you just heard, we have large kindergartens coming up at Sato, which is expected because of the new development that's going on up there. So, moving forward, we're going to see growth continue in the north part of the district, and we'll continue to see growth in the south part of the district, particularly when the development in the Beaverton side of Schultz Ferry Road starts going. There, there is a promise of development, starting in the next construction season, so next spring. However, we're seeing interest rates go up, we're seeing the housing market cool, and we don't know what's going to happen. We have those developers and property owners, you know, deeply invested, and I should expect that they will go ahead and do what it takes to get those developments underway, get the utilities in the ground, and plat those properties, and that, it's at that point when they can start selling. So, I think it will be a lot of groundwork, but I'm not exactly sure how much construction will actually happen. We will see down in the south part of the district, obviously Mountain Center will be going to, we'll have a 12th grade next year, and we'll continue to see that school grow. The central area of the district is a real mixture of declines and rapid growth. We've talked before about Elmonica and the numbers that they're seeing out there at that campus, and we're also seeing, particularly on the east side of 217, stagnant or declining enrollments over there due to, you know, the age of the population on that side, the lack of new development over there, the housing crisis, things like that. So, moving forward this year, we're continuing to monitor development, well, we are continuing to monitor development that as it's going on, but we're really paying attention to what's happening, again, at Elmonica and other elementary schools in the central band of the district. We will be coming forward with a, at your next meeting, a series of potential objectives for a boundary adjustment for Elmonica. Again, that's being driven to balance the number of students that we have at Elmonica with surrounding attendance areas for elementary schools. We're also finalizing plans with the PSU Population Research Center to develop a long-range forecast for the district, and this will be the basis for our data moving forward with the middle school boundary adjustment, and we'll be starting that process in spring 2019. We also need to update our facilities plan, and we'll be using that data as part of the facilities plan. As I mentioned, we do have some boundary adjustments, so we will be in front of you here again at your next meeting to talk about board objectives, and we will be returning at your spring work session to talk about demographics of the district and what we're seeing broadly in eastern Washington County. So with that, I'll conclude my comments, and be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sparks? Susan?
I'm not sure you can answer this one, but I noticed there's a decrease overall in SUMA, and I was just wondering why there's a decrease in SUMA overall.
I would have to defer to Tiana for that one.
The testing that we do for SUMA has become much more difficult and hard to take, and also, we're seeing less students qualify.
Any other questions? Liam?
Steve, I would guess I was most curious about the difference in change at Beaver Acres versus Elmonica, given they're approximately, they're right next to it. And I was just curious if there was, just if there's just sort of a random thing, larger trend of what's going on generically?
I think...
And it's a little different than the regular narrative that we have gone on about the central Beaverton West or East or, whatever it is.
Right, and I think you would want to throw McKinley as well, in that McKinley actually declined from last year, where we have seen, you know, high turnover in that particular attendance area and volatile numbers. I think, you know, particularly for the Beaver Acres and Elmonica comparison, I have to point to the Sunset View Apartments as probably a lead indicator for that, since Sunset View is, I think it's 225 portable units that is in the Elmonica attendance area, and there are a lot of kids in that development.
Any other questions? Comments? I know that this is really Robert's area that, you know, he pushes, but you folks in your department talk about these numbers a lot. Is there anything that has came out as an anomaly, or just that you were surprised by anything? I know we've been talking a lot about housing costs, and we're seeing a decline in our Title I schools, and none of that has been too much of a surprise over the summer. Was there anything else when, when these numbers came out?
Yeah, the largest surprise, again, Elmonica, and we projected the amount of growth that was going to happen out there, but we were really surprised to see that it even exceeded our projections out there. And then, seeing declines in other locations that have historically been increasing, as well as having more of our affordable housing located, and McKinley is just, you know, one of those examples. I think one of the bigger concern, or concerns, surprises to me was the number of kindergartners at McCay. There have been three to four years of pretty steady decline, and it was a doubling of, you know, the number of kindergartners that showed up. We're at a loss to explain it. It's a good problem to have, but really surprised.
Did you have to do any last-minute, like moving portables or anything to accommodate some of this growth that you weren't expecting?
In terms of growth, we weren't expecting, no. We were expecting, we were responding to growth in the Elmonica area, we put two portables out there that were surplus from the Five Oaks, you know, additions and redevelopment, and we moved another portable up to Stoller, just in case, because of the growth that's going on up there. And Elmonica will be, those portals we open in the next week or so, fingers crossed, hopefully, and, you know, the Stoller is ready to go, but I do not believe it's in program for use yet.
Well, thank you, and we hope Robert's feeling better, and thank him for his hard work, and we look forward to staying on top of these important numbers as we move forward to keep our students educated.
Thank you.
Next up is our financial update. You want?
Well, good evening. We have your financial packet in front of you, but I wanted to let you know that our comprehensive annual financial report for 2017-18 will be going out this week for the audit committee review. The audit committee will meet November 6th to finalize the caper. The chair will bring your report to the December board meeting for your review. Tonight, we also have a supplemental budget for a change to the general fund. It's one update. We are allocating funds to cover facilities acquisition and construction in the amount of $250,000. These funds are needed to ensure that we have authority to spend from the general fund to cover anticipated expenditures, such as the flashing light at Sunset High School and other needs that may come up. In the past, we've had some amount of appropriation in the general fund, and this year we didn't, and so now we're making sure that we run a D cap, so we have something available. And all of these changes will be reflected in the financial report next month to include the supplemental budget, and I just wanted to know if you have any questions?
Questions? And thank you for giving the names of the folks that applied to be on the budget committee, and just to clarify, have all of the candidates been invited to our listening session next Monday?
No, you can go ahead and do that yourself. Great, okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this time... Okay, at this time, we're running a little ahead, really, and we're going to go ahead and take our break now, and we will come back at 10:00. Thank you. Mr. Deputy Superintendent Lee, are we ready to go?
We're ready.
All right, floor is yours.
All right, as you are well aware, Beaverton School District had a land swap a couple years ago with Hillsborough, and this is the area in which we're speaking of it. It used to be a part of the attendance area for Hazel Dell, and students in that area had the opportunity to be grandfathered into our schools, and so we did allow that. One of the oversights that Mr. Beaver had recognized for us is a lack of oversight of grandfathering our own transportation for those students. So we're bringing to you today the item within your agenda that would call an end to this busing in that area after three years, and that would come in June of 2019.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Donna?
Yeah, I have a question. I can't recall because my mind is a terrible thing to waste, as you know. I can't recall. What did we, what did we, like, promise or the parents over there? I know that we allowed them to grandfather in, but I thought transportation was part of that. Is that, is my thinking wrong?
Thank you. We couldn't find any evidence that anybody ever addressed your busing situation. We talked, there's a lot of evidence talking about what school we go to and that kind of thing. There's no written record anywhere that we said anything. We sent, just to add that, we sent in September, we sent a letter to, again, we're talking about currently 18 families, only eight kids, 18 students, pardon me, only eight students of which are using a bus right now. So we sent letters to those 18 families in September identifying that this had happened and that potentially existed that we would be grandfounding out. We have not heard anything from the community of any of those 18 families, the parents of those 18 students.
Thank you.
Yes, Mary and I also did a search in similar documents, or every board document that we could find during that timeframe. There was absolutely zero mention of transportation.
Anne?
The total cost of 20,000-something, is that the 100% or the 30% that's left over after we're reversed?
That's 100%, and that represents the difference between what our routes are today versus what our routes would be next year without these kids, the reduction of the miles or else.
Okay.
So that's what it costs us. Let me rephrase it. That's what it costs us. $20,000 would be the total cost. So we're going, I guess the 30% will be the net cost, the 30% of that, that would be the net cost of what the district's $6,000 will come out of the general fund.
Okay, so-
Or it's the 100% cost.
Okay, so it's like $6,000.
Yes.
Right? Yes. Okay, so I'm just going to make a comment here. We basically took the land that these families bought in and said, thought they were in Beaverton School District, and we swapped them, and now they live in Hillsborough, but we agreed that they could go to our schools as long as they wanted until the land changed hands, and then they would be going to Hillsborough. So I feel just a little bit strong that we owe it to them to continue to bus them. But that's my own personal feeling. I felt like, I know they didn't respond to you, but when I sat in community meetings around tables with some of these families, they feel like it's a done deal fighting the school district or the districts, and so they weren't very willing to come and be vocal. I encouraged them to come to our board meetings. I encouraged them to write letters if they were opposed to the swap, and they said, hmm, it's already probably been decided. So just, I appreciate that we sent a letter and all, but I'm not, I wouldn't expect them probably to respond, just personally after some conversations with them. But I haven't talked to them in two years, so I'm not sure that's the same conversation. So I'm just a little concerned, just putting it out there.
Any other comments? Anne?
I have a couple of questions. One, thank you for bringing the letter. I was very interested to see this. Is this what went out or something that will be going out?
It went out in September.
Okay, so it did go out already.
It went out on September 4th.
Okay. And then around the transportation reimbursement, are there any issues with us being reimbursed for travel outside of our own school district boundaries?
No.
And as we contemplated the plan of sunsetting, you know, frankly, I'm surprised to see the wide disparity in ages of the, I didn't really realize, I mean, I don't know why I didn't assume that we would be dealing with eight kids dispersed across K-12 necessarily. So I was just curious, did we just kind of say, you know, it's been three years, that's probably a good number, or was there, you know, once they started or ended at a certain point, you know, was there, or how did we come up with the proposal?
I would say that Chair Craig, as well as all departments that I work with, we need to be looking at where we can cut costs as we are continuing to cut budgets throughout the district. But the other part of this was the board never addressed it even. And so with an absence of that, not even a statement of a positive, a promise of transportation, it appeared to me that it was an oversight of the individuals working on this at the time. And we typically do not have a long-term, forever grand fathering. We would be committing for the next 12 years to transportation here for this area.
Anne, I'm adding, when we first looked at this back in 2016, the numbers were wrong. I believe there was 18 affected students. Now, originally, that number was, I think, 14 or 15. So to that is, where do we draw the line? And again, it was never addressed. People continued moving into that area, and as it developed, people continued to move into that area, and that was part of it as well, that, you know, as of this year, there's 18 students. Two years ago, in 2016, there were only 15 students.
So are these the same families?
I don't know.
What's happened, we also realized, we have a lot of our schools who were looking at that, or we had a school that simply remembered that area as being the attendance area and allowed families to continue to enroll.
So-
So they were not part of the scenario of when we went out there originally.
Sorry, Anne? No, she, no, you know.
Well, as people, the other thing too is, it's Hillsborough's area, but what we're going to find is, as people continue to move in, Beaverton Bus is still going there again.
I guess that's my question, the kids who've been, who weren't part of the original agreement, that seems like actually a problem with Hillsborough, is that?
We've actually, I contacted Hillsborough personally in the fall when we realized that we had gotten some of their students, and they said, thank you very much. They weren't going to take action at this point, there was no need to, but wanted them to be completely aware that students that are technically theirs are enrolled in our schools.
Susan?
So on an ongoing basis, the school knows that this has ended as, you know, they shouldn't be accepting kids from that particular dress.
That's correct. They're very aware of that.
So this might be too detailed, but do we know exactly? It sounds like we know which families have sort of took advantage of the situation, if you want to call it that, because they're in the, because they saw the Beaverton bus go. We also know the families that were grandfathered in. So do we know then, the families that have technically been grandfathered in, have all those kids been through our system, or there's still a couple out there? I'm just kind of curious as to what that looks like. That's all. It's time I rush, maybe Anne can rephrase it, because she's great at rephrasing everything I said. Go right ahead.
I think, let me take a step. I think what you're asking is, is the families that have been grandfathered in, any new children joining us, are they part of those original families or those new families that have come in? I can identify at least two families that are brand new, one of which has this current sixth grader in our system, and they have a first grader too. So that one I can understand in that they already had one of the systems, so keep them in the system as well. But I identify two other families that they don't have siblings in the system.
So I was just surprised that there were two kindergartners. So my assumption was that they were younger siblings of ones that had already been, that's what my assumption was, because I didn't know how else we would start with kindergartners. But I personally think this is, now that we know that some folks, we're not supposed to have kids, we would not want this on the other side, and I think these families need to be talked to, and they can't stay in our system.
And Becky, we are addressing that, and I was just surprised when this happened. So I've been working with teaching and learning, and we are starting the open enrollment process for these families. So that will be going into effect for next year. So they have to apply to remain and then be approved by Hillsborough to remain in best person.
So, clarifying question here, then, if they're coming in through open enrollment, that doesn't mean they have eligibility for, no.
That's correct.
That's, yeah.
So I think really more, if there's anything we want to add right now, is what the magical cutoff was, three years, five years, seven years, three and a half?
If nothing else, we wanted to bring this forward as a conversation, discussion to raise awareness. It leaves a real dollar going out of our system, and just really understanding what the long-term commitment is from our side of the school district.
And again, I went to those community, I'm really surprised we did not address, that we did not address this at the time. So, well, if there's any other information that needs to come out between now and when we vote on this next month, could you please share that with the board as soon as possible?
Absolutely, absolutely. As you see in the letter, we also notified parents that this meeting was occurring this evening and next month, to be able to come and come testify.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that part. I think that we can empathize, that I still think if people feel strongly, they know how to get ahold of one of us or whatever, and they can't just automatically, we can't just automatically predict that they're having, you know, an issue with this, that they could still speak up, that it's not, it's not a done deal. So, thank you so much for the information. It was enlightening.
Gail, and you want to talk about the supplemental budget?
I spoke earlier about what the supplemental budget is for. It's $250,000 moving from instruction to facilities acquisition and for the possibility of being even put in, things such as the flashing light at Sunset. Any questions on that?
Any questions? Anne?
I move that we approve the tax resolution number 18-1022 to adopt the supplemental budget and make appropriation transfers. Second?
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt the supplemental budget, resolution 18-102. And are there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Next up is a resolution from the school board on attendance. I think all of you have been agreeed. I really appreciate the input that Tom and Anne had to get it organized and representing the views of our school district, so appreciate the effort and the time, and the rewrite from the communications staff, so thank you very much. Is there any discussion?
You know, during the time at least that I've been on the board, but I know that this has been important to the board even before those five years, I just wanted to highlight the struggle that the board has had to find ways to measure success for all students, as well as the goals that we have for helping families feel like they are active participants in our schools. And attendance has always been highlighted as one of the key factors for that. We know that if students aren't comfortable coming to school, that they can't learn, and that that's an indicator that whatever else is going on at school isn't working for them. And so I really just wanted to call out how important it was that I thought that attendance measurements have been part of the district strategic plan for as long as I've been watching the strategic plan, you know, so it goes back to the thrive, I think attendance was part of that, as well as with the pillar work that's been done in the last few years here. So I know that it's important, I know it's going to continue to be important, and I'm glad that the board is considering opportunities to reinforce their continuing, you know, I would say at least a decade's worth of commitment on attendance as an important factor for students.
Anne?
And I would just add in that, that that's one of the reasons that the state is putting such an important focus on this through ODE and the governor, just feeling that you can't learn if you're not at school, and they're hoping that by just really pushing this out, that we will see kids staying in school and coming ready to learn. So therefore, I move that we adopt the Beaverton School Board Resolution on Improving Attendance as listed in our reports.
I second.
So it's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt the resolution on improving attendance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second?
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Board comments? Any board comments? Donna?
Just quickly, I attended the Padres Unidos meeting over at Merlot Station, and it was really exciting seeing the parents really excited about the program that's being offered over there for their students, and they're seeing a great deal of success, and they're very, you know, supportive, and it was great. And they had great translation services, because I can't understand all of the, I couldn't understand everyone speaking Spanish, so it was great.
Susan?
I just wanted to take a couple of things. One, I know I wasn't the only board member that participated in the BEF fundraising, but it was, it's always fun to watch the kids get engaged and advocate for BEF and Fundraise, and it's a great opportunity, and I appreciate it, and I think it's great that we're able to support our students and our district. And I also wanted to comment that, started my rounds of meeting with principals and hope to go to schools more this year, met with Brian Kernberg from Whitford, and they're doing fantastically amazing things, so it was pretty exciting.
Just would like to add a lower one of the night, one of the nights over at BEF.
Oh, yeah.
I will just add to the ever-growing applause for the BEF phoneathon. We, myself and Becky and the superintendent were able to be there one night, and I got my butt kicked. Both of them did a wonderful job of fundraising, and, but, we were a tough team, we worked hard, but there's a professional fundraiser in their midst. But all joking aside, it's really important, it was great to see those fundraising efforts. I know that money's going into the classrooms, it really matters, and I'm looking forward to attending for future BEF phoneathons. Also got a chance to go visit with the Chehalum PTO, which was amazing. They have really great energy, they have a lot of things going on. I'm looking forward to hopefully joining them to volunteer at some point in the school year. And then I got to do a school visit over at William Walker, and I was really impressed with some of the things that their student success coach was doing. I saw a lot of kids well-regulated, on target, and I'm amazed too that all of those kids can move around in such a big building, because they're in the middle school building right now. And seeing the little rolling carts where they'll put their backpacks, because the lockers might be a little big, that's something else.
Anne?
I just wanted to briefly report, last weekend I was in Utah with other school board, state leaders from Alaska and Utah and Arizona, California, Washington, all of us, Idaho, gathering together. We each presented what was going on in our state, and of course, the executive director and I presented on revenue reform and how we're going to try to push for that this upcoming year. So it was just really cool to be with other passionate school board members who are battling some of the same things we battle in our state, but on a different level. It's great.
Anne?
Just a couple of quick things. One, and I'm sure you'll pay copious attention to Eric's known- One, and I'm sure you'll pay copious attention to Eric's notes of planning committee meetings, but as part of those, we've really been talking about some of the things that we can do structurally to improve student experience. And in fact, the attendance discussion here today was reminding me of some of those things I just wanted to kind of throw out. As I think about students that I am closely related to, you know, we sometimes forget that we, we throw attendance barriers in as a, as a system. Every time we schedule a game that they have to travel to, that they have to mishap, they have the day for, that is an attendance barrier that we are the ones instituting. So, I guess I just wanted to take just a minute to give us the time to think about, what are we doing systemically that we can do to increase attendance for all of our kids? And then also, like many board members, I've had the opportunity to go to visit schools in Zone 2, as you've heard tonight already from Steve Sparks and the excellent report from Robert McCracken, growth continues to be an issue as we build and fill new schools without any evidence of maybe, I know that board members are aware of future planning, but it is not aware to community members, or teachers, or staff about what the planning is, and that we need to be continually aware of what we should be doing to plan for that kind of growth, as we continue to see new houses go up. People, people are concerned that we aren't paying enough attention, so I just need to relay that. People are making assumptions that we have property that we do not have, and I believe that, that people will be curious to know what we're doing.
Eric?
We're in the second session of the Citizens Bond Accountability Committee, specifically to look at the Raleigh Hills project. And so, we had, the staff brought some options, whether we go through the original commitments made on the bond, and they also looked at other options, like potentially a, as big as a whole new school on a determined date. So, we had a lot, we had great deliberation, and Cheryl will come next meeting, but it was pretty much unanimous that there was like better options than were originally planned on the, the project. So, I think the staff, Paul and Cheryl will represent the Citizens Committee, but you're going to hear a lot about, more about this next, next meeting, so just wanted to give you an FYI, since I think I talked to you guys after the first one, but it does look like there's some better potential, a lot to discuss.
Well, it looks like we're all been busy out in schools and out and about, and as you heard, I got to go to walk and bike to school at Vos, and it was a party, I am telling you. These kids were dancing, and the Beaverton Police were high-fiving and handing out things, and all the teachers were out there, and it was, it was a great event, and they were doing great things at Hyton and at Greenway, too, so it was, that was good. And I got an opportunity to visit Hyton Elementary and Stoller with a Recreator, Teddy Roosevelt, and the students greeted Teddy, and they were very well-attended, and Stoller was chosen because they want a statewide history bee, and no one even comes close to this team at Stoller. And they were a very impressive group, and it's always impressive to hear what kind of questions the students ask Teddy Roosevelt. They pay attention to what's going on in current events now, and they ask Teddy what he thinks about that, and so that was very good. And again, to just go back on the BEF phone-a-thon, I think they raised $89,000, and we had area businesses that were matching that, so they were very pleased. I think they're going to raise about $180,000 with that. But all of us got our clocks cleaned at the 11th hour by Betty Flad and her team from the Sunset Key Club. They got a $5,000 donation that they were not expecting at like five minutes to eight. So, all of us got our clocks cleaned by, by that, but it was, it was really, it was really great. Well, we all got our milkshakes, it was good, we all got our milkshakes. And then lastly, I had my first Avid class last week, and just for anybody in the audience or anyone here, they are really short of Avid mentors. So, you've got teachers that are running around between groups, and I'm just really impressed with the quality of the kids, and if you, if you have an hour to spare, it is really worthwhile to see this, this program in action. So, if you're at all interested, there's still plenty of time to get trained and get into an Avid class, which is good. And I really appreciate the work the Bond Accountability Team is doing, they're really addressing some tough issues, and we've got a great group of citizens that are doing that. And lastly, we've met twice with the Student Advisory Committee. It's getting a little bit slower start, because we used to meet with them twice a month, and we're now only meeting with them once a month. So, this next meeting, they'll elect officers, and we'll start seeing them at our meeting. But they did a whole afternoons project of what kind of thing, topic they want to focus on. And it was amazing for me to see all of these 15 students from all of these different schools go through this big, big, big exercise, and overwhelmingly, all come to the same topic, no matter what kind of student they are, where they go to school, how important mental health is in our schools. And it came through very loud and clear, and I think we're going to be hearing a lot of it from our, our student advisory group when they start presenting to us. So, we've got a lot of good things that are going on out there. I appreciate all that you folks do, all the time that you give, and everything that you do between meetings. And our meeting is adjourned for tonight, and we will be back on November 26th here at the Administration Office. We're adjourned.